Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, October 8th, 2010. We're here in the John F. Raul Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome those guests who are joining us here in Council chambers, as well as those who are viewing us through Channel 35, which broadcasts each of these meetings live through the city's cable system on Channel 35, and rebroadcast them each evening of our meetings as well. For your convenience, you are also available live in our remote city halls in Van Nuys and San Pedro, if that's closer to where you live. You can also testify from those chambers. We're also available through the Internet at our city's homepage, lacity.org, where you can find our agendas and links to important city departments and services to improve the quality of your life in Los Angeles. But among other things, we have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings and archived footage of all of our past council meetings. And there's our link to our agendas, so that you can click on an item of interest to you and go directly to the video footage for that item. We also are available through your telephones by calling the following number, (213) 621-CITY. It's a service called Council Phone. It's (213) 621-CITY, and that allows us to be able to listen in on council meetings, as well as any of our committee meetings as well. All of our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance throughout our city buildings, as well as on the Internet at lacity.org. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items, all items receive a public hearing either in committee or in council. If they've already had a committee hearing in -- at the committee level, excuse me, if they've had a public hearing, then it requires a council member to reopen that public hearing to be heard here in council. We also have a section for general public comments, which are items not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council. And if you'd like to be heard on any of those items, please fill out a speaker card in the back, or in one of our remote facilities in Van Nuys or in San Pedro. I could ask folks to begin to come to order and take their seats. It is Friday, and on Fridays, we have presentations for notable occasions and important dates to celebrate accomplishments of Angelinos and to welcome guests from around the world as well. We do have six presentations today. We have one from Council District 4 and one from Council District 10. Both of those are for Council District 5. Then we will go to Council District 9, two from Council District 14, and then one from myself from Council District 13. I'll look to Mr. Labange to see if --
I'm ready.
Ready? I'll hand the seat over to Mr. Zine, and I'll join Mr. Labange at the podium for our first presentation. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Labange and Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange?
Yes.
Mr. Labange.
Okay. This is a beautiful morning in Los Angeles and a great day, as we celebrate, as we gather right here. And Mr. Zine, I am joined by Mr. Garcetti, and in just a moment, we're going to have our honored guests come forward on this day. So, Mr. Garcetti, if you could just give a little bit background on this beautiful chambers, just got to check for that one notation.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and thank you, colleagues. We are very pleased today to have two honorees to celebrate a very important occasion for the city of Los Angeles. We have our friend, the Consul General of Israel, Jacob Dianne, who is here also with the Consul General of Egypt Ambassador, Dr. Hashem El-Nakib. I recently, about a year and a half ago, traveled to Egypt to meet with government officials, met with the President, and then carried on to Israel. The fact that I could fly between the two nations was something that, two decades ago, might have been thought unthinkable. But it's a reflection of both of these proud nations' histories, of the peace that they have found together, and the incredible role that they play, both as friends to the United States, but also as important world powers that are maintaining peace in a region and in a world that so badly needs it. It is fitting for our Egyptian guests that we are in a city hall that was built with the highest aspirations. I think Egypt knows about building big buildings that are monuments to our governments, but also monuments to the people. It is fitting that on top of this building, we have a step pyramid at the very top, that, of course, the first step pyramids were built in Egypt. But this building is something that, I think, recognizes the highest ideals that we share across all nations and all peoples. The cornerstone that was laid in 1929, our council member, Jose Wezar, his grandfather was one of the laborers, actually, who worked on this building. It has sand from every county and water from every mission here in the state of California. As you walk in and you see great things that have been said by leaders and philosophers from around the world, we know that this is a place where we've come to seek that basic expression of people's voices. And today, as we celebrate the international nature of this city, we also celebrate the friendship that we have with both of these nations and the friendship that they have with one another. That we have sister cities that Mr. Labange will speak to in both places, but that we also have, I think, among us all, populations that track everything that's happening in Egypt and track everything that's happening in Israel. Because Los Angeles is a great Egyptian city, and it certainly is a great Jewish city as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to the man who is our unofficial ambassador for the city of Los Angeles. He is the president of our sister city association as well, and somebody who has traveled around the world during that basic citizen diplomacy. It's nice when we have the official leaders here, but we all know that the strength of our leadership only comes from the support that we get from the cultural, academic, and business ties that we have between normal folks. And it's great to have in the chair a Middle Easterner, as we do this, the great Dennis Zine, who himself, a Lebanese, who recently was president of the Jewish Home for the Aging. So we embody, I think, that same spirit in these chambers that we celebrate here at the podium today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Council Member Tom Labange.
Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti, give Mr. Garcetti a big hand for that great speech right there. And I think it's so important, as he spoke of, Los Angeles is one of the great cities of the world. We're fortunate that all have gone before us. In '32, we hosted the Olympic Games, and again in 1984. That brought the world here. Over the time, late great Mayor Tom Bradley, as well as the late great City Council President John F. Raul, always drove the issue of opening these doors wide for people to come here. And that's what Los Angeles is all about. And if you look at the world map, you see that only Hong Kong and New York City have more consulates than Los Angeles. Los Angeles has the most consulates, not counting capital cities throughout the world, Ms. Han, I wanted to get that straight. Los Angeles has more consulates. And now, we're here to welcome the consulate of great Egypt, the Consul General. Thank you so much, Israel. And I think it's so important, in a way, here, because Israel is everyone's friend, and that together, they're here as the Consul General of Israel to welcome everybody together, along with their colleagues from the consulate corps. So it's a very special morning that we're here, and I'm here in speaking for Council Member Paul Coretts, who worked very hard to help arrange this event this morning, along with our mayor, Antonio Villarreal. Let's give Mayor Villarreal a little hand right now for his event right there, and his chief of protocol, Elgashap. You don't get enough applause. Elgashap, a big hand for Elgashap right there. Our chief of protocol. But that being said, I think it's important that you have an opportunity to speak and know that anyone in the public of Los Angeles, wherever they come from in the world, all they have to do to see us are find sergeants of arms, and they get a little card, they fill it out, and they speak to this council. And this morning, we're here honored specially by you, Dr. to come and speak as the representative of Egypt, as a new consulate here, and be part of the great Southern California community. So please let me welcome here Dr. Hashem El-Nakib. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Sometimes, you know, the feelings can get to be overwhelming, and I'm overwhelmed being here today. They told me that I have like two minutes, and I don't know, I mean, a diplomat having the microphone in such an honorable place, speaking only for two minutes, it's a big challenge to me, but I'll try to meet the standard. Mr. Eric Garcetti, Los Angeles City Council President, Ms. Jane Perry, President Pro Tempore, ladies and gentlemen of the 15 Los Angeles districts. I'm deeply honored by the warm reception I have received since our consulate has taken this historical move to the magnificent city of Los Angeles. I'm very grateful for the kind-hearted effort put forth in welcoming us today. I'm incredibly proud to be serving in our beloved Egyptian community in one of the greatest, as well as greatly diverse, cities in the United States. I'd like to thank the esteemed members of the city council who showed us great support and hospitality. This city serves as a great example of a place where people of different cultures and belief systems are wonderfully coexisting. Cairo, like Los Angeles, is an international hub dedicated to the peace and well-being of its citizens and neighbors. For Cairo, this dedication was demonstrated nearly 32 years ago, when President Anwar Sadat took off to Jerusalem to instill peace in the region, whether by ongoing disagreement and violence. The move would later lead President Mubarak and his partner in peace, Prime Minister Menahem Begin, to share the 1978 Nobel Prize for the historic agreement. For the whole world, Egypt was the first Arab country to renounce the armed struggle against Israel, and heads recognized by declaration of a binding agreement the existence of Israel and its rights to secure and recognize border. Well, Egypt has long been a core of events in the Middle East. President Mubarak bore on his shoulders the Palestinian cause. Since violence started breaking many decades ago, we have supported the negotiations until now between the Palestinian Authority and Hamas, so that an additional hurdle to peace can be removed. And this past September, we supported another round of talks and negotiations on our neutral third-party soil. For discussions that were expected to yield little to no advances, the trilateral talks between President Mubarak, Mr. Abbas, and Prime Minister Netanyahu, as well as other rounds of discussions generated enough interest to keep the world watching. I trust, and I'm saying it with full hope, I trust that the glimmer of hope presented in this round of negotiations will be viewed as a new opportunity to compete against past challenges, to be rewarding on the condition that we devote ourselves to making peace a must rather than an option. Egypt has served -- Egypt has served as an example before, and we hope to serve as an example again, that cooperation and dedication to the ideals of peace can in fact lead to the term of compromise. A small amount of sacrifice from each side may mean a double victory for both. The United States has been a long ally of Egypt. Our diplomatic relations started in 1854, believe it or not, 1854. The first American garrison came to the Middle East, came to defend the Egyptian borders in the northern part of Egypt and in the southern part of Egypt. We fought many wars together. We have been always perceived, we have always perceived the United States as a liberator and creator of democracy. That is how we study the United States in our history books, and until now, we perceive the United States as such. The United States have invested more than $25 billion, unfortunately, from taxpayers' money, but the good news is that it has invested in the people of Egypt. It has invested in the future of great two nations. I mean, the United States is an international power, and Egypt as a regional power. Egyptian people are so much indebted to what the United States has given us over the past 15 years. Egypt continues to develop robustly and stay afloat despite the global economic crisis. I will not bore you with many numbers, but I can assure you that we are doing very well, and the investment, the American-Egyptian investment ranks number one in our balanced trade, and we continue to thrive in increasing even our cultural, political, military, and our economic friendship on different levels. As an ambassador of my country, I'm grateful for our progress and take personal pride in showing case the leaps that my great country of Egypt has taken. I also take personal responsibility in ensuring my country's citizens are integrating locally and contributing to the success and development of this great city of Los Angeles, the renowned city of angels. I am genuinely obliged by this warm reception, and I look forward to a long and fruitful stay in your beloved city.
Now, some great remarks. Please welcome the Consul General of Israel, Jacob Dianne.
Shalom, everyone. President Garcetti, Ambassador Labange, our dear council members, each and every one of you is a personal and good friend of mine in the state of Israel. It's a great day. It's a special day. It's a very joyful day for me as an Israeli, standing here with my Egyptian colleague, being embraced by this great city, the city of Los Angeles, that is welcoming my colleague, Ambassador El-Nakib. And I'm -- I think that today is the first day here in Los Angeles, not only because the Egyptians moved their consulate to Los Angeles from San Francisco, which means something about this great city of Los Angeles, but it's the first day in which we are making a commitment here, that we will be devoted to promote the relationships between Egypt and Israel, not only in Cairo and not only in Jerusalem, but across the world. And we start here from Los Angeles, sending this strong message, and together with you, and together with your warm hospitality and friendship and your love, that I feel on a daily basis, I can assure you that we together will work to make Los Angeles a better place, but first and foremost, the Middle East a better place. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange, Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl?
I just saw the handshake between Egypt and Israel. Shake again those hands. It is very important, as we see the peace negotiations right now at a very critical moment, that the Egyptian community in Los Angeles, which is a very strong, vibrant community, and the Israeli community, and friends of Israel and friends of Egypt, get together here in Los Angeles and help with the peace process in the Mideast. There's two big issues for me in the Mideast. One is, Israel must be recognized as a sovereign state. Cut out all this BS about we can't recognize it. Recognize Israel, and at the same time, Israel has to stop the settlements. Both of these issues have to go forward, and the Egyptians can play a major role in seeing that we move in that direction. I'm tired of war in the Mideast for the last, what has it been, 63 years since the state was founded? I'd like to retire someday with peace in the Mideast, not a constant peace process that seems to go nowhere. So with your energy and his energy, please take that back to your home countries, and let's see if we can forge peace in the Mideast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. You know, I just want to, our sister city program, ELOT Israel, which was the second sister city in 1959, just after Nagoya was selected as Los Angeles' sister city program, Giza, very important, that relationship, people to people, and to realize they're speaking from a public microphone in a public hall. And then when you look today, where they announced the Nobel Peace Prizes for a variety of academic areas, that peace prize is presented in the city hall in Oslo, Sweden, in the People's Hall. So I'd like to ask all the people who came down to celebrate today for this very important occasion, please stand and be recognized by the city council. And I just want to also welcome Wolfgang Drouss, the Consul General from the Federal Republic of Germany, who's down here, as well as the honorary Kong from Tongo. Togo, very go. Excuse me very much, we will welcome you as well there. And I will close. Tomorrow is John Lennon's, what have been his 70th birthday, if he had lived. And one of the greatest songs that he wrote is "Give Peace a Chance." Let's give peace a chance, everybody. Welcome, Egypt. Okay, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Labange. Welcome, Egypt and Israel. Thank you all very much. Peace can begin in Los Angeles and spread throughout the world. Thank you. Our next presentation, Council District Number 9. Council District Number 9, our next presentation. Ms. Perry.
Can I have a one minute? Can I just say, Ms. Perry, I just wanted to ask for the new Consul General and the Consul General from Israel, a one thing I learned long ago, I forgot to introduce my wife once, and I paid for it heavy. Your two beautiful wives are here, please introduce them for the head one. Introduce your wife.
Please stand up. You know, one of the signs of people to people is definitely the sign, at least in my house, and then the ambassador will speak for his house, but my wife has a PhD in Egyptology, so she speaks ancient Egyptian languages. What can be better peace than that?
Let me reciprocate and ask my dear friend, Ambassador Dianne, if he had spent his honeymoon in Cairo. We spent our honeymoon in Israel. What could be of a proof of peace more than that?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Council Member Perry, next presentation, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I would like to invite all the representatives of the National Children's Study of Los Angeles and Ventura to come stand with me at the podium. And don't be surprised if there's quite a few people, because this is a very, very important issue. Come on up as close as you can. Come on up, you might be come close, it's better. Come close, come close, come close. Come close. Everybody come closer. It's fine. Oh, Michael, you're here. We made it. Mr. Chair, I'm very proud to welcome the representatives of the National Children's Study of Los Angeles and Ventura to our council chambers today. Today, our children are faced with a variety of chronic conditions stemming from the complex interaction of environmental exposures and genetic factors. Chronic conditions such as asthma, autism, obesity, and neurodevelopment difficulties are increasing in prevalence, as a burden, and cost us all, both nationwide and locally. The National Children's Study will examine the effects of environmental influences on the health and development of more than 100,000 children across the country from before birth until the age of 21, making it the largest and most important study of children's health and development ever conducted in the United States. Research consistently shows that health and development early in life can have strong, persistent effects, so understanding the factors and influences and what shapes children's health and development is critical to helping them achieve health and become successful adults. 4,000 Los Angeles County children and their families will have the opportunity to participate in this National Children's Study, and they will help us find the answers to today's most troubling health problems, including preterm birth, autism, developmental delays, obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. The data generated by the National Children's Study will form the scientific cornerstone for children's health policy for generations to come. National and local-level findings from the National Children's Study will improve the current understanding of health conditions that impact Los Angeles's children and families, and can be used to inform the development and provision of services by the city of Los Angeles. This study is the largest, as I said, a long-term study of environmental influences on children's health and development ever conducted in the United States. So on behalf of not only the 9th District, but the city of Los Angeles, I would like to congratulate all of the partners who are here today and who will be working on this National Children's Study locally for their commitment to health and well-being of future generations of children here in our city and county. Now, the list is extremely long, so I'm not going to go through it now for the sake of time, but I would like to invite Neil Helfen, Principal Investigator for the National Children's Study Los Angeles-Ventura Studies Center, and Director for the Center for Healthier Children, Families, and Communities, to say a few words on behalf of this entire group of very engaged people behind me. Let's give him a hand.
Good morning. I'm Neil Helfen. I'm a professor of Pediatrics, Public Health, and Public Policy at UCLA, and I'm also very proud to say that I'm a former Commissioner of the City Commission on Children, Youth, and Families. I'm here today as the Principal Investigator of the National Children's Study in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties, and I would like to thank all the council members for today's proclamation expressing the city's support for this historic study. In particular, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry for taking the lead to draw attention to the National Children's Study. This landmark effort will profoundly impact how we understand the relationship between the environment that our children grow up in and their ability to develop into healthy, productive, and successful adults. The NCS will enroll 100,000 children across the nation, but 4,000 here in Los Angeles, the largest number in any one location. The results of this study will transform what we do as clinicians in our practices, in terms of our prevention practices, and very much so in terms of the kinds of public policies that we conduct in order to improve children's health. Beginning in mid-November, the NCS will begin recruiting women ages 18 to 49 in an initial set of 14 communities here in Los Angeles County. Seven of those communities are located in the city of Los Angeles, including Brentwood, Crenshaw, Downtown, Highland Park, North Hill, San Pedro, and Sun Valley. Over the next five years, the study will expand, include 56 different neighborhoods in Los Angeles County, and will include all of your council districts. We are working nonstop to encourage families who reside in the selected communities to participate. Today's proclamation helps us immensely in that regard. Like any project of this magnitude, we cannot do it alone, just with our UCLA team. This is a big combined collaborative effort. We're working closely in association with Cedar Sinai Medical Center and several institutional partners, as well as indispensable community partners throughout the county, including the University of Southern California, that I believe is known as USC. And I want to thank Professor Roberta Williams, who's the former Chair of Pediatrics and Physician Chief at Children's Hospital LA, for joining us today. Unfortunately, I do not have time to mention all the community partners, but I want to thank them for their support and for being here today. In particular, I want to acknowledge Loretta Jones, our Community Advisory Co-Chair, who's here with us today. And Loretta plays a very special role in the National Children's Study, since she's been part of the planning effort back in Washington for the past decade, making sure that the study got off the ground. The NCS depends on community and family participation. We may come from different backgrounds, professions, and walks of life, but the NCS, the National Children's Study, we are all united in one common cause, to improve the health of children and families in our cities, our state, and our nation. So thank you very much.
Ms. Perry, Mr. Wezar?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Wezar?
I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing this to chambers today. This is very, very important work, and I think this is going to pay off dividends in so many ways for young people, for society as a whole, as we save money in the front end of prevention and not at the back end. So thank you so much for your work. I also am excited that this is, some of this work is going to take place in Highland Park, an area that is deserving and an area that I think is going to be very responsive and helpful in making sure this goes through. And finally, I want to thank Celia Brugman from UCLA for touching base with our office and letting us know more about this study. Thank you so much.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you. We get so many presentations that some of the times, we're not paying attention. I found myself paying riveted attention to this, because what you're doing is extremely significant and important. If I could ask you a sense of a timetable on the first phase of the study and the second, and in your vision, where you see this leading to in terms of actually getting into intervention and prevention strategies with young people?
Just, you know, if in fact, in looking at one disease, looking at asthma, for example, which is the most common chronic disease in children, something that we know is very, very preventable in terms of putting kids in the hospital, the National Children's Study is successful in ways-- is successful in ways that I believe it will be. It will tell us more about how we can prevent asthma from happening, which will have enormous economic gains in terms of what it will mean in terms of hospitalizations for children, the cost in the healthcare system, but more importantly, it'll make me mean that many more children will be attending school, not missing school, because they have a disease that could be prevented, and things that we can be doing to prevent not only asthma but many other conditions. The rise of childhood obesity and the rise of autism are really two things that we don't really understand at this point, as well as the increasing rates of things like ADHD. And again, this study will give us a real window into how we can prevent these things and really decrease the burden on children in our society and on their families in terms of the caregiving that they are required to do for things that we can be preventing.
Well, we thank you very much for that. I know UCLA's been very helpful with me, with Santa Monica Airport, the pediatricians, and the outreach on some of the toxicity issues that we're facing there. You've been a great contributor in dealing with these issues, and thank you for today, and thank you, Jan Perry, for bringing it to our attention.
Councilmember Haun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Perry, UCLA, all those who will be working on this study, I think this is so important, and I think the information we're going to find is really going to help the decision-makers, the policymakers, those who really are looking at the wholeness and the wellness of their constituents. You know, when the advancement project, when Connie Rice presented that to the city, it was really based on, let's look at the gang problem, let's look at the root causes of why kids are joining gangs. And what came back was a number of things, but really, it was, you know, you really have to look at these children from womb to, you know, five years old, you've got to look at everything to really understand the obstacles, the burdens, the challenges that our children have just, you know, surviving. And I know one of the areas we're going to be looking at is the Harbor area, the San Pedro area, which is so important because of cargo-related pollution and cargo-related, you know, impacts to neighborhoods, whether it's the truck traffic, whether it's the air pollution, it's one of the largest polluters in our region. There's 350,000 days of lost school in the state of California directly related to cargo. And I think those are statistics that will help us as we continue to mandate that we can grow the Port of Los Angeles, but it must be clean, it must be green, we can have good jobs, but we must have clean air as well. No job is worth the loss of life or the critical health impact that it has on our yet-to-be-born children. So this study is coming at a great time, and again, I think the information will help people to continue to commit to changing things that create poverty, changing things that create health risks, and changing things that really put an unfair burden on our children so that they can really survive and thrive and have great lives. So thank you for what you're doing.
Councilmember Haun, thank you, and I think that last statement is really important, because what this study is really about is about prevention and wellness and getting an early start. So we really move from the mindset of just having our children survive so that all our children will thrive, because that's what we want for each one of our children, that's what we need for our city's children as well, so thank you.
Very good.
Ms. Perry, to close?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti for the introduction. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. I just wanted to recognize, I do have a formal presentation, but we do have some visitors that are here today from the Wailian Group from China, investors who are here looking at the city of Los Angeles and wonderful opportunities that we have in the city to promote investment, to promote the bilateral ties between our nations, and I want to thank them. I was just in China last year doing the same thing. Hong Yu, Brian Su, and Linda Hei are all here. If we can please give them a round of applause and welcome them to the City of Angels. Great to have you here, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles. Our next presentation, CD14, Mr. Jose Weezer, CD14. Mr. Wesson, you are on deck.
Good morning, sir, how are you?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues in public, I have a very special presentation today for retired Deputy Chief Ray Rojo. I'm joined today by a number of fire officials, our very own Fire Chief Milledge Peaks, who will speak in a moment, Chief of Staff Donald Frazier, firefighter Michelle Banks, Captain Stephen Ruda, Deputy Chief Andy Fox, Deputy Chief Jimmy Hill, Assistant Chief Mark Storm, Battalion Chief Brian Cummings, Captain Mark Wolf, Captain Ventura, and Captain Dominguez. And this show of force today from our fire department is for a very special individual, and we thought it'd be appropriate in this month that is known as Latino Heritage Month to honor a special Latina who has served the city of Los Angeles for over 36 years. You know, traditionally, on Latino Heritage Month, we bring in celebrities, we bring in stars, but we wanted to recognize an individual who has served the city and perhaps put his life on the line to protect all of us. So today, in honor of Latino Heritage Month, and I know we're a little over, but here we are, I want to recognize retired Fire Department Deputy Chief Ray Rojo and thank him for his 36 years of service to our city. Deputy Chief Rojo was born in San Antonio, Texas, and served as a paratrooper in the US Army. After leaving his military post, he earned his degree from the University of Southern California, Smith, did you hear that, University of Southern California. During his time with the Los Angeles Fire Department, he served as a fire technology instructor for over 20 years at both Los Angeles Harbor and El Camino College. Additionally, he served as President of the Fire Department Service to Mankind Club for 15 years and Governor of the Sartoma Mountain West Region. When not wearing the fire department uniform, he dedicated his time to coaching for the South Bay Little League while also serving as Chairman of the Board, and just when I thought his service list could not get any more impressive, I saw that he served as a founding member of the Weingart YMCA. Even after retiring from the fire department, he continues to serve as a mentor for hundreds of youth and future firefighters. He is a man of great integrity and is one of our city's unsung heroes, a man who got up each and every day for 36 years knowing he may have to put his life on the line for the benefit of all of us. And for that, we thank him, and we thank all of our emergency personnel. So Deputy Chief Rojo, you are truly a hero, you have served the city well and with distinction, you have served your community well and with distinction, and for that, we thank you, we honor you, and on this day, which is in the Latino Heritage Month, we also wanted to recognize you as one of the great Latinos who have served in the Los Angeles Fire Department. Congratulations. And if you don't mind, Chief Rojo, we'll ask our chief to Milledge Peak to say a few words, and then we'll hear from our special guest.
Good morning. I had the pleasure of meeting Chief Rojo 33 years ago when I was a very young firefighter, and he was a captain. We worked together one day at Old Fire Station 30 on Central Avenue, which is now the African-American Museum and has been closed for a number of years, but that very first day, he made an impression on me that has stuck with me throughout my career, and we had a fire that day, we were first on scene of a restaurant fire down on Central and Washington, and he led us into battle. We fought fire together that day, and we have continued to fight battles ever since that first meeting. He rose through the ranks, he was a captain, he was a battalion chief, he was an assistant chief, he was a deputy chief, and that's how he ended his career 15 years ago, and he probably should have become our fire chief at some point. And today, we are going to honor him, we're going to turn over the reins of the fire department to him, he's going to be our honorary fire chief for the day, and he is going to run the fire department for the city today. He has truly been my mentor, he has been my friend, he has been my leader, I respect him. He's not a person who has laid down and enjoyed his retirement, he still works, he runs our toy program and has run our toy program for a number of years. He's personally responsible for kids receiving millions and millions of toys throughout the Southern California region. He is the president of the Sartoma Associations, our service to mankind organization. As the councilman said, he's been an instructor at both El Camino and Harbor College for over 20 years, he is still an instructor and teacher, and he's just an incredible individual, and it is truly an honor to pay homage to him today and allow him to be the fire chief, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Chief Rojo, Tom Labons would like to be your staff assistant for today.
Oh, very, I'll be a staff assistant every day, staff assistants are firefighters who help out the city of Los Angeles. But hey, I want to say about Ray Rojo, Chief, as you said, you met him 30 years ago, it may have been shortly after that that I met Chief at Engine 52 on Van S Avenue, now it's part of a school, but Ray Rojo's middle name is community. He always cared about community and the greater community. He truly is a great individual, I'm very proud of you and to know you all these years, and there are times where you have images, as you know, of seeing our colleagues in a variety of departments, whether they're on the fire truck or at a police station or in a park. I see Ray there at the Hotchkiss Center for the toy drive when but a few people are there, June Andrade being one of them, packing toys for children. Ray Rojo is a saint, and Mr. Weezer, you're half a saint for bringing him in today. You've got to be as good as this guy, he's a great guy. Ray Rojo!
Thank you very much, Mr. Labons, I'll take that half, and before we hear from Deputy Chief Ray Rojo, we have Captain Dominguez from Los Bomberos who will share a few words.
Thank you. Well, thank you, good morning, everybody. I'm here on behalf of the Los Bomberos Organization, an organization that was established approximately 40 years ago, made up of Latino firefighters initially, and has transpired to an organization that helps the youth and our inner-city kids, we're a nonprofit group that raises money, and we like to get that money back to students and help them with their education and possibly a career in the fire service. The reason this is a proud moment for our organization today is Ray Rojo has done a lot for not only the fire department, but I want to talk about what he's done for the community. And oftentimes, we look at individuals about their titles and things like that, but Ray Rojo is an individual that has given back. He's hands-on, he's there delivering the goods, and sometimes he's shown by example, that's what it takes to make a difference in the community. So on behalf of our organization, Ray, I want to thank you, sir, it's an honor, there's a lot of respect that goes to this man, and I can see from his family behind him how that goes on to the family, but thank you very much on behalf of the Los Bomberos. Thank you very much. And now we'd like to introduce this man who's been an inspiration to all of us here, retired Chief Ray Rojo.
Thank you very much for this beautiful proclamation. I'm involved, yes, I am involved, but you know why I'm involved, because I have the support of a beautiful wife. This is my wife Carol. We're pushing 55 years together, and I just about passed my probation at home. I've been in Sartoma for 40 years. We are the only city with a fire chief that belongs to Sartoma. When Milledge Peaks became the chief, I got a phone call and he says, "I'm going to join you guys, I know what you're doing." We are approaching 3 million toys, and I'll tell you now that when the Marines heard what we were doing, they were a little hurt. I'm a military man, I have a colonel's rating in the reserves, and I want to tell you, I wouldn't hurt a Marine, I would help them. And to let you know how this thing unfolds, they called us this last year, and they said, "We need some toys for some of our coverage." And I said, "How many toys do you need?" He said, "We need about 3,000." We gave them six. It's the American way. And I want to say just one little thing about LA City, I love LA City, this is the place. In 1989, we had a cold spell, bad cold spell, fires all over the place, the homeless. The Salvation Army said, "Why don't we give them blankets?" They called our department, I happened to have been there, and I told the chief, "We'll handle them like toys." In two days, we had 55,000 blankets, and we worked with the Salvation Army. I want to thank you for this proclamation and this recognition, the people behind me all work hard to get involved, this is something that, you know you're doing good, and again, I'm glad to be part of LA. No matter where I traveled, they say, "Where do you live?" I said, "Los Angeles, this is the place." Thank you very much, and great work that you guys do. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief, thank you very much. Mr. Weezer, to close?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and we have a lot of heroes in the city of Los Angeles before us as one, and certainly all our emergency personnel are others. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the city and all your community service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, congratulations. Our next presentation will be from Councilmember Wesson, CD10, Councilmember Wesson. And Mr. Clerk, can you verify that we have a quorum? I see a number of blank seats. We've lost the quorum, colleagues. So we haven't officially opened yet?
No. Turning to me, it's four. Go.
This is our winner. All right. Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'm pinch-hitting today for Councilmember Paul Corretts. When I was a young man growing up, you know, there might have been a lot of problems in this land where related to discrimination and prejudice and things of that nature, but when I reflect back on my early years in the public school system, it was really the best system that I ever participated in. We believed in balance, wasn't just about education, math, reading, writing, as we used to say back then, arithmetic. It was about automotive repair classes, we had metal classes, wood shop, we even had co-ed home economic classes where you learned how to cook. I never thought those skills would benefit me, but every Friday, my grandson spends the night, and I bake for him his poppy's world-famous oatmeal raisin chocolate chip cookies that I learned in that class. We also had band classes, and we had glee club classes, and we had art classes, and all of this was at a public school where you did not have to pay a dime. So if there was some would-be artist or singer or some Mr. Goodrich, they could be discovered through their work in school. As time has gone by and budgets get squeezed, we make adjustments. Not all of them are for the better, but a lot of our art... Thank goodness, thank God, that private sector people recognize the importance of balance in the lives of our young people. And they've come forward in all kinds of capacities to ensure that we can still provide our children who have a dream with an opportunity to take that dream, that vision, and maybe one day make that vision a reality. And that's by them giving provisions so that those dreams can become true. We have with us today the Latino Artbeat Program, which is HQed in Chicago. It's a nonprofit organization that offers scholarships and monetary awards to students throughout the United States of America. Now, they do this generally during the National Hispanic Heritage Month, and they run their competitions and their, I guess, their award ceremonies through September fifteenth through October fifteenth. They currently have these programs. We're lucky that we have one in the great city of Los Angeles, but also Chicago, Houston, Miami, and Washington, D.C. Did I miss any?
No.
Okay. So far, I'm still rolling. This year's theme is what Hispanic heritage and culture means to me. And they have various categories where you have drawings, you have painting, you could do it in painting, you could do it in film, do it with animation. And since this program was started in nineteen ninety-eight, they have awarded over three, I think, million dollars in scholarships and prizes to students throughout this phenomenal country. Now, I'm assuming that the reason why Mr. Corretts was asked to do this year's presentation is because a winner from Los Angeles is a student at Fairfax High School. Correct? Am I right? And so, we're now, since Mr. Weezer isn't here, I mean, not Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts isn't here, and it's close to redistricting time, I want to ask everybody to give me a vote so I can take Fairfax High School out of Mr. Corretts's district and put it into my district. If you're not here, we can do that, so. And I'm just so proud of this young lady. She's a senior at Fairfax. And she had to compete against dozens of other students from L.A. USD. And she was selected the first-place winner. And she's going to Washington, D.C. on October fourteenth, where she will meet the winners from the other cities. And they will have their huge celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month. Also, and that's, let's give her a hand, Jeanette Cardona. And come here for one second, because I want to, I don't want to butcher the name of your work of art. So, I'm going to tell you, ask you to tell the other council people and the individuals that are here today the name of the number-one winning piece of art in the history of Los Angeles.
The title of my piece is called Fuego Y Ritmo, which means "Fire and Rhythm" in Spanish.
It means "Fire and what?"
"Rhythm."
Okay. So, next year, when you win, just give me the English version, because I can say "fire" and "rhythm" without a problem. I also want to acknowledge the president of the organization, Don Rossi. And I think I met him last year or the year before last. And I was very impressed with him. We kind of chatted for a moment. And he makes it his business to make sure that he's here to show the students the importance of the work that they do. And I can't say enough, Don, it's, a lot of people don't realize how difficult it is to run a nonprofit, to get the money, to not only provide the scholarships, but to keep things going on a daily basis, the travel involved, coming up with the judges to select the winner. And there's always a tight, tight competition. But he does it because he recognizes the importance of it, and he does it because he loves it. I'm going to ask him at this point in time to say a few words, and that's the president, the chair, the man, the legend, Don Rossi. Give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much. I'm really very pleased and honored to be here in front of the chamber once again. This is our eighth year operating the Latino Artbeat Program here in Los Angeles. And I have to say, every year when I come in, I see for the first time all of the artwork entries that didn't win the competition. We normally see the ones that win, and they send it to Chicago. I was so impressed last night. We have a partnership here with Art Share Los Angeles. And Tracy Kelly is the director. She's standing up, giving me moral support here. And our program also runs in collaboration with L.A. USD and the Beyond the Bell Program of L.A. USD. And through this partnership, over the years, I have been able to sign scholarship awards just for Los Angeles in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. You can applaud. Last night, and I didn't, I wasn't prepared to come to the podium today, but last night, we did a little presentation at Art Share, and all of the Los Angeles winners were there. And some of the kids who didn't win also came to see what was going on. And off in the right-hand corner, I noticed a student, and he was our winner from two years ago. And after the event, I went up to him and I said, "Andy," I said, "you know, you won a couple of years ago." He said, "I want to see how Latino Artbeat is progressing." And he says, "I want to thank you again personally for the award that you made me." Now, normally, we give out a thousand dollars to first-place winners. And Andy was such a special student that I was able to negotiate a forty-thousand-dollar scholarship for him. So, he's a true believer. This is Latino Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and we like to do our awards presentations and give our scholarships out during Hispanic Heritage Month. However, at Latino Artbeat, and as my learned colleague said, it's very difficult running a non-for-profit today. We're cut in federal fundings. We get very little state funding. And even with the cities, we have to sometimes come in and supplement what's going on in another city. So, Latino Artbeat lives Hispanic heritage and higher education on a daily basis. I am pleased that this year, we've been invited to do our national awards presentation in Washington, D.C. And three years ago, Latino Artbeat was selected as one of the partner organizations to the White House Initiative on Hispanic Learning. And that was quite an honor for us. I think there's about a hundred and fifty of us only in the United States. And we shine because of the volunteers and the partnerships we have. And I have to say again from this podium that I am more proud of the Los Angeles partnership than a lot of the others that we have. Thank you so much for honoring us today. And I'm so pleased that Jeanette Cardona will be able to represent the city of Los Angeles and Washington, D.C. next week. And we know that we're going to send her off with all of our heart and our warm feelings and good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. At this point, it's a pleasure. I'm going to present two resolutions. And Tracy, I see you in the back just smiling. She's excited. But I want to present, Jeanette, this is your first of many, I'm sure, awards and presentations. This is from the city of Los Angeles. And Councilmember Corretts got every member of this council to sign this resolution. So, that's for you. And for, Don, by the time we're finished with you, you'll be able to wallpaper every wall in your office with commendations from the greatest city on the planet. And this is for you.
Thank you so much.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. We have two more presentations, but let's run through the agenda, if we may. Please, if we can go through the first items, if we can call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Race, Rosenthal, Smith, Wesson, Zane, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Rosenthal moves. Ms. Perry, seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Weezer moves. Mr. Krikorian, seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. We can go through the items on the agenda.
Mr. President, Items One through Three are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items Two and Three have been submitted and distributed to council. A public hearing for Item Two was not satisfied in committee.
Okay. We'll call Two Special for cards. Anybody wishing to call One or Three Special? Seeing none, let's take those two items. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
Items Four, Three, Twenty-One are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right. Without objection, those are before us. Do we have cards on any of these?
We do. Items Fourteen, Fifteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Twenty, and Twenty-One.
Okay. We'll close the other public hearings. Anybody wishing to call any of these Special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. On the continuation agenda, please.
Item Twenty-Two is from the continuation page and is an item scheduled for closed session.
Okay. Mr. Parks?
Yes, we were thoroughly briefed on this. Mr. Weezer may want to recuse himself, but we can go on open session on this today.
All right. Recuse myself from that item, please. And Mr. City Attorney, did we need to hold a public hearing on this item? Okay. All right. Mr. Weezer, if you'd like to step out, we'll take a vote on that, then. We'll move Mr. Weezer from the roll. And please open the roll.
We have to.
Oh, good. Sorry. Let's go ahead and announce the settlement, please.
Mr. President, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of three-point-five million dollars in a case entitled Michael Romero versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Go ahead and prepare the roll. We had the briefing on this in closed session on Wednesday. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Can we get forthwith our number one?
Yes, we'll send number one forthwith. We'll keep those other items Special and return to the presentations. And our next presentation is from the recently recused and returned, Mr. Weezer.
And I'm very honored to be standing here next to a fellow Mustang. As many of you know, I'm a proud alumnus of Calegian High School in Ball Heights. And today, I have the distinct pleasure to honor an individual who has done a lot for our community, supporting and mentoring youth. I'm here today with fellow Mustang Gilbert Anthony Reda Flores. Let's give him a big round of applause. It was in nineteen sixty at the young age of fourteen years old that Coach Reda Flores was introduced to his first love, football. It was at the Variety Boys and Girls Club where he was able to develop and nurture his football skills, which prepared him for his four years as a star player on the Calegian varsity football team. After graduating from Calegian, Coach Reda Flores went on to play at Pasadena Community College, where he was referred to as the best football player ever to come out of Calegian High School. Though sadly, he was unable to continue playing football due to an injury, but as the saying goes, "Those who can't play, coach and teach." And that's exactly what he did. It was in nineteen sixty-seven when Coach Reda Flores started his coaching career with the Calegian freshman football team. He was assisted by an exceptional coaching staff, the late Art DeFoya and Joe Caldera, who's with us here and will share a few words. And in nineteen seventy-four, Coach Reda Flores was named the head football coach of the Calegian High School varsity team. Players found out pretty quickly that the physical rigors would be tough. Winter and spring weight training, followed by long, intense practices during the season with demanding drills and countless repetitions of the fundamentals. Mentally, coaches' players needed to have unlimited determination and the desire to play as a team and never to give up, values which the coach instilled in them. In nineteen seventy-seven, Gilbert Reda Flores left Calegian to coach at the community college level, where he further developed the coaching skills that would eventually earn him countless recognitions. In nineteen eighty-eight, he became the head football coach at Alhambra High School. After only one year as a head coach, he was given the prestigious Coach of the Year Award. Coach Reda Flores was also named Los Angeles Times Coach of the Year and post-advocated Coach of the Year in nineteen ninety-four, and NFL Coach for the year nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and six. No doubt, Coach Reda Flores had, has an impressive career in football. But what impresses all of us the most is not how many titles he has won or how many awards he has received, but his commitment to the well-being of his players and young people. For Coach Reda Flores, it was important to him that he instilled in his players the importance of hard work, commitment, and dedication, not just on the field, but off the field as well. He served as a mentor to countless youth. In some cases, he served as a father figure, something I know the young men whose lives he touched will never, ever forget. And that certainly was in the tradition of the Calegian spirit. They say, "A good coach teaches you about football. A great coach teaches you about life." And that is what Coach Reda Flores did for many young people. And Coach Reda Flores certainly did that, and that's why he's a great coach and a great man. And that's why we're here recognizing him today for the influence and impact he has had on so many young people. Coach, on behalf of the city, on behalf of Calegian High School, on behalf of the many young people whose lives you've touched and improved, congratulations and thank you very, very much.
Berzine.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, Coach, there's a man over to your right with white hair. And I recognize him, Barra Chalera, the mayor pro temp of Pico Rivera. Is there a relationship, or is he just standing up trying to be recognized? I think you folks may be related. And Bob is a great man from Pico Rivera. We serve on the U.S. Army Advisory Committee together. And I know he's here honoring, recognizing, supporting you. But I wanted to recognize Bob and his lovely wife, who's here to show their support for you, and all your fans that are here to be named with this great honor. And it's quite an honor indeed to have all those folks standing behind you, showing their support. So, congratulations. And Bob, you've got good people in your family. Congratulations.
Thank you. And Berzine, Mr. Archuleta is also a fellow Mustang. What class?
That's right. Six.
I forget. You forget what class? And then, now we're going to hear from Mr. Joe Caldera, who I first met when I was on the Board of Education. He was an educator there for many, many years. And we have a lot in common from the same small town in Mexico, Hades, Acatecas. And once we found out, we went to the same high school. The bond has never broken. He coached with our coach that we're honoring and also is a good friend. Please welcome Joe Caldera.
Mr. Caldera, before you speak, Mr. Labanche would like to say a few words.
I didn't mean to break the cadence there, Coach, but Calegian has some great graduates. And we're very proud of Jose Weezer. Give Jose Weezer a big hand, a Mustang there. But Coach Reda Flores, your son, now coach at Gudnale College, which, very impressive history of that school. He's leading there, father, son. But a coach influences so many people on and off the field, students throughout the campus because of what you do. So, I just wanted to rise for the coach. I wanted to coach. And the time of my graduation from college, which is in the mid-seventies, there was no teaching jobs in Los Angeles. There was a different balance. So, I came to City Hall. And I did get to coach the LAPD. And the one thing about the LAPD, when you gave them an order, they did it. And one thing I used to do with drills is in between drills, I'd make them run a lap. So, all the police, all the police football teams, thought I probably got a bad feeling about police because I made them run so much. But you know how important running is and to run and get good health and be a great player. So, Coach, I'm standing for you. Sorry for that long story, because you've led young men and you've planted like great old trees that are going to be scattered around Southern California. Congratulations on your honor today. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Go Calegian. Sorry for that long story, because you've led young men, and you've planted like great old trees that are going to be scattered around Southern California. Congratulations on your honor today. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Go Solisian!
I want to thank Councilman Weezer for taking the time here this morning to recognize my best friend, my compadre. We've been friends since September of 1960, when we both entered Solisian High School as ninth graders. I just wanted to share a couple of highlights of Coach Rudolph Flores, my friend. He taught and coached for 42 years, and during that time, he was married for 44 years. And I think that says a lot about a Christian marriage today. Forty-four years, same wife. I was the best man there, and it's still going strong. Let's give the wife a round of applause. Gilbert coached last 21 years as head coach at Alhambra High School, and I'll just tell you very quick, they made the playoffs 14 out of 21 years. And out of the other 19, out of the 21 years, they beat their tri-city, Marquepo and San Gabriel High School. That school was not used to losing, I mean, winning before they got there in 1988. And I can just tell you this, that while he coached, he had the three F's that I think are very important, not fails. But one would be his commitment to his family, it's symbolic with all his family members here and friends. The other one, to his faith, and the last thing, to football. And I think that says scores and scores, because the kids that he had in a classroom on the field, they turned out to be, and he would always say, because we would say together many times, but he would say it in a louder voice, "Besides, do it again with 110 percent," because he was good at saying that. But the kids that he had something to do with, he turned out to be good sons and daughters, good students, and also to be great citizens, to vote, to become citizens and vote, and lastly, to become great fathers, great parents, and be great participants in their communities. So I just wanted to echo a few more things than what Councilman Weezer said, and a little more of a highlight. Thank you very much, and now maybe we can get the coach to say a few words.
I promise I won't speak too loud, because you've got to understand, when you speak to football players, they usually have helmets, and they can't hear you too well. So I always had to put the volume very high, but my wife instructed me that I wasn't in the locker room today, so I'm going to speak very softly. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, 14th District Councilman, for this beautiful recognition. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, members of the City Council. Mr. Labanz, thank you for those kind words. I know that the championship was very close, and I'm really sure that they're striving to get you one. And I know, at that time, when I experienced Marshall High, I knew how supportive you were, and it was very important for the young boys to see that coming from the city of L.A. Thank you, Mr. Caldera, for those kind words. I'd like particularly just to say thank you to Mr. Frank Baldarama and my son, Steve Rudolph Flores, who particularly were instrumental in speaking to the people involved to make this reception very special. Real quickly, 65 years ago, my parents brought me to Los Angeles on Brooklyn and Boyle. My parents, raise your hand, Mom and Dad, are 83-years-old, and they're Angelinos, for sure. They were here many years ago, and they've seen Los Angeles, and this is the first time they'd been here after 83 years in the City Hall, and it's very special for me. My wife, Mary Rudolph Flores, my sons, and my family members and friends and supporters is the only reason why I was able to fulfill my obligations to make the difference in students' lives, in the classroom and in the football field. But the most important thing I just want to share with you is, my parents made it very easy for me to go to school and to get the proper education, because that was a priority. And they taught me the four Rs, the four Rs that I taught the boys in the locker room and in the cla-- excuse me, and in the classroom. They were, these were the four, and my parents didn't go past high school, junior high. Respect, they taught me. Responsibility, to be relentless, and to refuse to lose, to refuse to lose against adversity. Those were the four that have been in my heart and in my mind to get me through my 65 years of life. My parents are responsible for that. And thank you, Mr. Weezer, for giving me that possibility to be here, to acknowledge them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And one thing that we are taught at Solisian is that we are family. As you can see here, he has his immediate family and his extended family, because us boys in Boyle Heights and East L.A., we depend on one another to get through those obstacles, and that's what we're about. Thank you very much, and I want to give a big shout-out to my teacher at Solisian High School, my health teacher, Mr. Torres, who's still with us here today. Thank you very much. Go Mustangs, and congratulations, and thank you for all the work you've done on behalf of young boys through football. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Our next presentation is from Council District 13, I believe.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you as well to those folks that are part of this presentation with me for their good patience here today. This is an ongoing tradition that we have each year. We celebrated a number of things this month. Wednesday was celebrating Italian-American Heritage Month. Latino History Month has been ongoing. But we also want to make sure that something that touches everybody, a universal need and concern for all Angelinos, that we do what we can to make sure that we raise awareness about life insurance. Each year, we come before City Council to let people know that nearly 70 million adult Americans do not have enough life coverage insurance needed to ensure a secure financial future for them and for their loved ones. Insurance, as we all know, provides financial security for families in the event of a premature death, by helping surviving family members deal with that situation, the immediate and long-term financial concerns that they have when a loved one is taken from them too short and too early. Recent studies have found that when a premature death occurs, insufficient life insurance coverage results in 3/4, 75% of surviving family having to take measures such as working additional jobs, longer hours, borrowing money, withdrawing money from savings and investment accounts, and in many cases, even moving where they live to lesser housing. The city of Los Angeles, and I am very proud to join with the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors, who are reflected behind here, this wonderful reflection of our city, as one of its distinguished organizations in our community that serves the needs of our citizens and improving the financial services of our citizens. And the goal of this month is to let consumers know that there are life insurance products out there, that there's life insurance available, to make sure that they do have that protection for their family, something that we offer in the city of Los Angeles for our own employees. But we encourage them to seek professional advice, to learn from a professional like those behind me, what they can do to help protect their family's future. So today, we declare this past month of September as Life Insurance Awareness Month, but it's ongoing even into the early month of October here, and to encourage all citizens to take necessary steps to ensure the financial security of their loved ones. We have the committee here with us today, but we would like to hear from the president, Edna Dimataga, excuse me, Fernandez, Dimataga Fernandez, who leads this august body and professional body, that makes sure that all communities are touched by this and knowing what they can do. And we appreciate all the publicity that they do throughout this month, advertisements, community meetings, et cetera. But with that, Edna, I'd love to, first of all, give you this on behalf of the city of Los Angeles for Life Insurance Awareness Month, and have you say a few words.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. The six of us standing before you today represent the Los Angeles chapter of NIFA, and NIFA stands for the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors. And I'd like to introduce some of my board members. This is Sean Cochran. He's our political involvement chair. Corey Chu, our membership chair. Wilma Asavido, she is our government relations chair. Dennis Lawton, our national committee man, and Dee Nix, our executive director. And we're happy to be here today. Thank you for having us. And we'd like to thank the city of Los Angeles, and of course, President of City Council, Eric Garcetti, for providing us this proclamation acknowledging Life Insurance Awareness Month. And as he mentioned, tens of millions of Americans do not have adequate life insurance. And we all know that if they were to die prematurely, their loved ones would definitely struggle. And we encourage you to inform everyone you know about this very important website. It's called Life Happens, and it's www.lifehappens.org, and there are so many resources on there that you can share with others, because a lot of times, people don't know they need life insurance until a death happens in the family. So we want to prevent that from happening. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you to Edna and the board. Remember, get that out there. Anybody who wants further information, as we put in our e-newsletters and other things to let people know about that, please just contact us in the office. We'll make sure through NIFA as well that we can get that publicity out there. And again, that's a great website, lifehappens.org. So thank you, and let's make sure that this is an impactful Life Insurance Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk, what's our next order of business?
That takes council back to items called special or public comment on, not on council's agenda.
All right, first item is? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, great. All right, let's see, Arnold Sacks is first. Wayne Spindler, are you still here? Come on up. Matthew Dowd, looks like whoever gets to the mic first can speak first. So Wayne Spindler's up first, and then if Arnold Sacks is there, he can go next, and then Matthew Dowd.
Another great meeting, violating the agreement that was reached. A public comment was going to come sharply at 10 o'clock at the beginning of the meeting, 11:26 right now, and yet all these awards and presentations. While you were doing all of that, the city has continued to increase its deficits. What are we going to do about our deficits? We've got parties outside for ambassadors, we've got presentations inside for teachers, and, but, you know, an hour and a half has went by, and we haven't begun the business of the city. So, public comments should come first. Now, why wouldn't you do that? Well, obviously, one reason you wouldn't do that is, God forbid, our ambassador friends would have to sit here and listen to me talk first, and then Zuma Dogg, and then some of the other people that are here today, because if they did, they would realize that they should have stayed in San Francisco at that embassy. They shouldn't have come down here to a city that's bankrupt. Now, we have another water main in the valley that broke, a large water main in CD 12, I think that's Greg Smith's. Oh, he's here today. I didn't, I didn't know he showed up to meetings anymore, but he's there. And this shows again the problem with these water mains still breaking despite the change in the water policies of watering on alternate days as opposed to two days a week. That needs to be looked at. And then finally, it is good news that the council overturned 245-day fee increase in the water. It's sort of an ECAF-style fee on your water bills. But what we need is to get more of the rebate coming, because the Metropolitan Water District is giving a 13-cent reduction per 100 cubic feet of water, and the ratepayer is only getting about 3 cents of that. We need to get all of it, so reduce our water rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Arnold Sacks. As per usual, the people in the chambers are not allowed to comment till after reports are heard, or are allowed to comment only before reports are heard on items on the agenda that are open to public comment. It's really totally unfair. That being said, in yesterday's meeting, you had some items on your agenda regarding the river, the L.A. River. And what was interesting is, item 21 referred to two reports, one from the Bureau of Engineering and one from the Community Redevelopment Agency. The Bureau of Engineering's report was dated September 8, 2010. The CRA status report was dated September 13, 2010. In somewhat of a coincidental manner, the Ad hoc River Committee report relative to the Los Angeles River Projects 2010 Third Status Report, the City Administrative Office dated report was September 8, 2010, and the L.A. River Revitalization Corporation report was dated September 13, 2010. So two dates, each with two reports, four reports total. On Tuesday, there was a story regarding the L.A.'s collection share proposed by the Commission on Revenue Enhancement. What's interesting about this one is that the Commission on Revenue Enhancement decided that they would audit the finding by the city's controller regarding the amount of money taken in by the city. So basically, what I'm trying to get a point here is, you have redundancy in these committee reports, you have redundancy in agency reports, and you wonder why the city faces a deficit. Get some leadership.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel, please. Walter Bechtel. Walter Bechtel? He's passing. Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our next speaker would be Carl Kessler. Carl Kessler? Carl Kessler, you are not in chambers?
No, it's me.
Well, I have you Matt Dowd, so your true identity is Matt Dowd, so Carl Kessler, Matt Dowd, go ahead.
Doesn't really matter. It's the sound of my voice that they know on Channel 35. My friends out there come out and see me at the beach, say they miss me. City Council, they don't watch anymore unless we come down and sort of let our feelings be known about the state of the city. And here's one of them, Bill Rosendahl, of course. I've got to, you know, no, there's no easing off on Arturo, because here's another mistake, okay? Streets to homes, it's the whole RV thing. You just heard the Egyptians say it's a global financial crisis, and the city's right in the middle of it all. And look, they didn't even put anything on the back of the page, they only used one side of the page. So any city department who needs paper because of the budget cuts, you can use the other side of those, all right? For more of these, here's what I'm talking about, Bernie Parks signature. Love to see Bernie Parks's signature right here with Greg Smith. I've got the document, it's on the city website, 072041270,000. Let's make out a check to the United States District Court. You should have just settled the case already. See, but here's what you did the other day. You're reinstating 6344. Arnold Sacks talked about it. I couldn't, I didn't have all day to wait here, because you're reintroducing it, but we're arguing that very section of your code on November 5, one month, right here in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal. So why would you be wasting time with this when you've got a federal case over that code section? Here's a document, safe and sane Venice, and they're going, "It's no secret that LAPD is short-staffed and can use all the help they can get." So get private security, they're saying, because basically, LAPD, I mean, I don't, you know, what are they saying? Get your own security, because LAPD's not going to be there? Settle the case already, Greg Smith.
Zuma Dogg, our final speaker. Zuma Dogg, our final speaker on public comment.
Yes, hello, City Council. I returned again to discuss the conflict of interest regarding the L.A. Housing Department and the REAP rent escrow program. I'll try to say it more in a way that is amenable toward your acceptance. Now, if you could, I have some valuable information. I know that on July 21, the L.A. City Attorney's Office, although there was supposed to be a report regarding conflict of interest that Councilmember Parks said was fairly serious, as the allegations are alleged, that the city attorney did not even start the report that was supposed to be finished. So because of E-RIPs, they don't have the staff. I went to work, Zuma Dogg, here's what I found. Roberto A., he is the general manager of the L.A. Housing Department in charge of the REAP outreach contracts. Hundreds of thousands of dollars were awarded to L.A. Housing Law Project. Roberto A. is L.A. Housing Law Project. Additionally, Robert A., Assistant General Manager of the Housing Department, also of L.A. Housing Law Project, has a private law firm. The same address for his private law firm is the one you will find for L.A. Housing Law Project. What's happening is you're awarding hundreds of thousands of dollars. He is awarding hundreds of thousands of dollars in his position as the REAP outreach contractor awardeur and person for oversight. He's gathering information as he's out at these properties as his outreach contractor. Then he's creating lawsuits for tenants against the property owners in his position as a private attorney. This is a serious allegation. Parks said as such. You discussed it. Additionally, I am told there is $2 million missing out of the rent escrow fund of Los Angeles. I hope that the city attorney will be showing up with the homework done, giving you the report on this serious matter that is now clearly on the record.
That completes our public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
That takes council back to items called special, the first of which is item number two called special for cards.
Item number two, Wayne Spindler.
There we have DWP and software. It doesn't say here exactly how much here. There's an opposed agreement with law, well, software and ancillary system for proprietary software, hardware, equipment maintenance, and replacement parts in connection with the image remittance processing system. How difficult can it be to get off-the-shelf software for something like this? You can go to, you can go to Office Depot, you can go to Staples Center, you can buy a scanner, you know, with a mail-in rebate, the city could get it for like $99. Put it up next to a computer, you know, about $1,500, you could have all the scanning software space that you need. But what we're going to have here, I imagine, would be some sort of old remittance system that supposedly is so powerful and proprietary and special that there is nobody else but this company that can do it. So they'll charge whatever. And the council will vote unanimously. We look at, we still have automatic voting here in the council because a lot of times I see votes taking place, and people aren't in their chairs. They're out in the aisles mingling, even going to the john. And yet, when a vote comes up miraculously, they get a yes vote. Because what happens is all of this stuff is ran on automatic pilot. We have automatic pilot for the city. Anybody with a contract just puts a number on a paper. Usually, if you're lucky, and a special committee's a five, one or two may show up. You may even get a quorum with three, and it'll pass. Say no to this and reevaluate the entire system so we don't have to keep amending it every year, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That matters before us for a vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 14 called special for cards.
Item 14?
14, sir.
14, we have Wayne Spindler.
Yes, ready to go. Item 14, famous commentator Bill Maher is going to get a star in the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I believe that, from what I heard, this ceremony for him had already taken place on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. There had been a special thing that had happened, and then he went on to another show. So I believe this presentation already had been passed. And of course, you know, there's another one here, to install a star in the Hollywood Walk of Fame for Tinker Bell and another one for Bill Maher. That's exactly what the council should be focusing on. This meeting today is just absolutely perfect. Concentrate on giving Bill Maher a star in the Hollywood Walk of Fame. This is a man who has stood for nothing but being against the military, being against conservatives, demonizing people, dividing this country's people, and to the point where he used to have a show on Channel 7, and the same period of time of that show was taken over by another host. Because obviously, on public television, nobody could take watching this guy's politically incorrect show. But he's still on TV, he's still out there with his hate, he's still out there with his divisiveness. And one minute, he's for Obama, the next minute, he's against Obama, the next minute, he's against this, and he's for this. And we're spending the time here to give this guy recognition. The only recognition he needs is that he needs to be off television. That's the recognition he needs. And that's why I don't buy cable television, because I don't supplement or subsidize his kind of programming. Thank you.
Yes, well, see, first of all, Bill Maher, that's the level we're getting to, you know, he's not even that well-known around the place, you know, overseas. He's not like, you know, how big are we going to make this Walk of Fame? How are the handicapped going to get around to all these stars? So let me say, I'm going to approve it. Firstly, because I have my public comment. But let me tell you, in the future, Cameron Diaz and Bruce Willis, both those stars will be covered up until we get him back on the agenda so that we can get my public comment. Because now, it's a thing now, if I haven't had the public comment, they don't get approved. Thank you.
Zuma Dogg.
I'll pass on this one.
That matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 15 called special for card.
Number 15, Arnold Sachs.
Let the comedy caravan begin.
Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Now, this is appropriate. Tinker Bell, if only you had made a motion, Ms. Hahn, for your, when you proposed the gift shop in the city council, city hall, right next to the Councilman bobblehead dolls, you could have vials of Tinker Bell's magic dust. Must be magic dust in the city council chambers. How else would anybody believe that you can congratulate yourselves on passing a budget in these difficult times that included a $28 million pay raise? Got to be magic dust. Or magic something, maybe mushrooms. How else could you agree that eliminating volunteers at the LAX?
Mr. President, he does not appear to be talking about the item on the agenda.
He needs some magic dust.
It has a best tangential relationship to it.
Magic dust, right? That's what made the, that's what made the ferry famous, isn't it? The magic dust.
Stay on focus, please.
I am focused. Have some of that, try some of that magic dust, and you could be focused. Anyway, we need to have more magic dust for the citizens of L.A. How else can they keep electing the incompetent people that are put forth on the platforms to run this city? Thank you.
Yes, Zuma Dogg, now blogging at la-citynews.com. And this, people, it's about the Hollywood Walk of Fame for the great beloved Tinker Bell. And I say we should approve this. Tinker Bell, I think, should be mayor of the city in the tradition of great mascot mayors like Antonio of Aragosa. Tinker Bell could be the first female mayor. Plus, she has the answer to the budget solutions, a magic wand. Okay, so we need a new mascot for the city of L.A. Antonio's not cutting it anymore. Santa Claus ain't going to get here till December. So I say we do make Tinker Bell, we pass this Hollywood Walk of Fame star. And a friendly amendment to take it one step further, when Richard Alarcon has to step down, which he will be doing 100% for sure.
Mr. Zine, he does not appear to be talking about this agenda item.
How do you know? Anyway, if a councilmember Alarcon steps down, have Tinker Bell sit in there until the next --
Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you, Tinker Bell. That's what I'm talking about. I talked about it the other day. Hollywood is where everyone wants to go. Everybody's heard of Tinker Bell. Oh my goodness, there's a global icon. So this is a good one. See, but people think, oh, you know, we voted for these people. No, they bought their spot. They just pay money to the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, and this is a Disney promotion. They'll have a big old Tinker Bell thing there. I mean, that would have been, that would have been a great presentation if you've had it already. Tom LeBarnge and Eric Garcetti are going to be there with Tinker Bell. And they've got the whole Tinker Bell charade. It's just a lovely thing for the kiddies. But that's what they like in Hollywood. If you want some revenue for your crippled, structurally deficit budget problem, I think I can tie it in like that, then these are good things. Hollywood stars, but make them global icons like this one. We love Tinker Bell. Most people, I've got my own personal problems with Tinker Bell, let me tell you. I actually got major, in fact, and in a weird kind of way, it's because of Tinker Bell that I'm here. Believe me, in a court of law under a deposition, if you talked about why Matt Dowd is even in Los Angeles, on a federal case against you, it's because of a girl called Tinker Bell on the internet. So Tinker Bell has huge, wide-reaching implications. So do I take this personally? Tinker Bell, it's the greatest one you've ever had on the agenda. I just, I can't contain myself. I'm ready to jump out of my skin, it's so good. So let me say, Channel 35, it's a great time, but that's why they get rid of everybody, because they don't want to hear our great public comments about how great these things are in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. This matters now before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 17 called special for cards.
Number 17, Mr. Peter Repovich.
I'm Peter Repovich, Director of Los Angeles Police Protective League. I want to thank you for the opportunity today to support Councilmember Zine and Parks' motion to remind the media of his responsibility to pay close attention in weighing in on what is in the public best interest and what crosses the line in reporting that may compromise the security of witnesses in serious violent cases and the potential harm to a criminal case that may happen even in well-intentioned reporting. Recently, a local newspaper published the names of key witnesses in a gang-related murder trial, including a 15-year-old minor. The names of the witnesses were not necessary to give to the public while informing the public as to the facts of the trial. Information made public also included jail recordings, wiretaps, and other confessions by defendants. This type of reporting has nihilistically compromised the safety of the witnesses named in the article and has shaken the confidence in the media by the LAPD investigators, sheriff deputies, and the district attorney's office. This reporting threatens the ability to secure important testimony from future gang-related trials. The fear of retaliation can be overwhelming for potential witnesses. The Police Protective League supports and applauds council's motion to ask members of the media to refrain from potentially jeopardizing the safety of witnesses and their families by publishing the names of witnesses in gang-related trials. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Spindler.
Well, this is interesting that the council is going to trample on the rights of the Fourth Estate. You can't go down this road. I mean, you gotta, you can't just tell the media to censor it and tell it what to do or not to do. What would you like the L.A. Times to do? Every time they have a story, shuttle somebody over here. David Zonheiser will come over here and go.
Oh, Mr. Alarcon, before your trial, can you proofread this story to make sure the witnesses aren't in the gang-related story? I mean, come on. You can't regulate free speech. You can't enforce this. It's ridiculous. The media understands what to print and not to print in these stories. They do it all over the country in the 49 other states that have logical people behind it. You can't put restrictions on free speech. This is strictly a First Amendment right of the media. Don't vote for this, or it'll be another lawsuit. Thank you.
Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
No, do this, do this. You should be doing way more of this, imploring. This is what you should have done to us right at the beginning. Implore us not to say this and don't wear the KKK. But no, make it an ordinance, make it a rule, wind up in federal court. I showed you the $481,000 worth of checks that have already been sent just for one small segment of the case. So, yeah, implore the media. And here's the next major comment that you ought to take notice of. They talked about it, why do you wait till public comment till now? This would have been one to have in front of the media, perhaps, while they were here. I hope I'm allowed to use tone now. That's the next thing, you're not going to, because you're experts at violating all across free speech. Oh my goodness.
One minute.
That will close our robust public speaker portion. And now we will go to Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this matter came to us as a result, gang murder. We know that the gangs in Los Angeles retaliate. In the past, gang members have killed witnesses, intimidated witnesses. If you ever go to Compton Court, and I've been to the Compton Courthouse, you'll see what the gang members do when their colleagues are on trial for serious crimes, including murder. They intimidate the witnesses. And when a newspaper publishes the names, other information of witnesses, what it does is tell witnesses, don't get involved. And what that does simply is let the gang members run amok and do what they want to do to intimidate and create more terrorism in the community of Los Angeles. And I think it's irresponsible for a newspaper to take a witness, a civilian witness that doesn't have any protection, other than calling 911, to come forward and have the courage to come forward and testify on a crime where gangs are involved in murders and other serious violations of decency, to publish their names. Because the gang member's going to get that information and go and retaliate. We know what happens in Mexico, where the police have been killed by the drug cartel, where the army folks have been killed by the drug cartel. And all we're doing is inviting more people not to get involved. We're inviting more people to refrain from being a witness. And what happens as a result is the gang members who want to intimidate a community, who want to cause havoc in a community, give them a free ride, basically a red carpet, to go do what they wish to do. So responsible reporting is important, but I think it's against rules of So responsible reporting is important, but I think it's against rules of common decency when witnesses come forward and a newspaper publishes their names, which gives the gang members the ability to retaliate. And there's no question that witnesses have been killed, witnesses have been intimidated, witnesses have been harmed by gang members who retaliate. There was a detective from LAPD, Detective Williams, who was involved in the investigation and the prosecution of an individual. That individual was out on bail in trial and killed that detective while he was picking up his young child from school in the San Fernando Valley. This was a case that happened a number of years ago, so we know that violent people do violent things. We don't need to cause more harm, more fear for our witnesses, and we encourage them to come forward and testify. People have a right to a trial, a fair trial. Witnesses have a right to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Yes, you can speak, Mr. LeBonge. I will now recognize you to speak.
Could we ask that a variety of publishers come over and testify to this issue here? Because I think what is, remember, years ago, a former chief of police stated how important it is not to give publicity. So with that being said, in the interest of a opportunity to make change, is it possible we could invite them over?
With the emphasis on asking them, inviting them.
Yeah, asking them.
You can't compel them to come.
Talk about that, did he?
I haven't.
So, okay, so we're going to look at it, and this is a note and file?
No, I don't, what is it? It's a request.
This is a request. So, let me just ask a question. What if we, let me ask you as a measure of the motion, what if we continue this to Tuesday and we call the publishers of these newspapers and ask them if they'd like to come and answer this? Just to get it on record.
I would support that, and there's also a law that prevents newspapers from publishing information on police officers. There's confidentiality of police officers, people in law enforcement, so I don't know why I wouldn't apply to this. If we could do that, Mr. Attorney, and maybe next Wednesday, I don't know if Tuesday would be sufficient time, but if we could have the publishers come before us and testify as to why they need it.
We'll call and invite them, and all they have to say is no, if they don't want, they have a right, that's free speech, First Amendment, but at the same time, do you think this is a prudent thing to do, Mr. City Attorney?
I can't advise on whether it's prudent or not. It's...
Is it lawful?
All you could do is request.
If you were in our position, looking for the health and welfare of the people of Los Angeles, I think it would be an opportunity.
Safety of people. Why don't we do this? Why don't we continue this? Why don't we continue this till Wednesday? And we will attempt to see if the publishers will come forward and testify as to the necessity why they need to publish the names of witnesses that are involved in testimony on gang-related murders. We'll see if they can justify that and see if we can do something. I know we have a paparazzi law that some people didn't support, but it's now in place, and I think we need to somehow, while we have free speech, have a little common decency also.
And I would also say too, Mr. President, if the publishers want to send their representatives like their attorneys, that's fine too. Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Zion?
Till Wednesday. Let's continue this matter till Wednesday.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue that till Wednesday. Next item, please.
Item number eighteen, called special for cards.
All right, number eighteen, Arnold Sachs, number eighteen.
Thank you, again. Thank you for starting the clock as normal. Just a real quick item on this one. Since the city is taking control of this farmer's market, and maybe through other farmer's markets in the city, you could also add an amendment to this item that would allow for the use of EBT cards at farmer's markets. I don't believe any farmer's market in the city of L.A. allows for the use of an EBT card. And since this now becomes the venue sponsored by the city, the city should have to appropriate the use of EBT cards, not only at this one, but other ones. I think it was pretty good, right, Mr. Weezer? Thank you.
Mr. Zuma Dog? We're a little bit over the minute, so why don't you take a short minute?
Okay, no, but I only used one on the last one. That was the point, right? I used one minute on my last time.
At the discretion of the chair, I'm giving you a minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. No, no, I got four. Anyway, I just want to say, how do you know that this is shady? It's Jose Weezer's district.
Well, you've got three minutes. Don't worry, you have three minutes. You have plenty of time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, yeah, one for this. Okay, so you know this is shady, because it says Jose Weezer, fiscal agent sponsoring organization. Okay, so right off the bat, vote no. If he wants to choose this fiscal agent and sponsoring organization, you know it's most likely corrupt. You know money's being pilfered. You know it's not going back into the community. But with that said, I am all for farmer's markets, because it's a good community environment. I love them. It's a place where people can go for good, clean sources of food, usually at good prices, and I'm all for these types of things. No Grand Avenue projects. More farmer's markets, as you can see. So here's something good, except we need to take this out of Jose Weezer's hands and make sure that in the next election, next year, we don't have Jose Weezer making these decisions. We have a new council member. He's corrupt. He's got to go.
All right, Mr. Weezer is our next speaker.
Thank you. To the previous speaker who spoke on EBT cards, Eagle Rock Farmer's Market does accept EBT cards, and the other farmer's markets are actually looking to get EBT cards at farmer's markets. It's a matter of training, but that is being worked on, and I think that is a very important thing, so that people are using these on fresh fruits and vegetables, and it's a thing we're working on at all farmer's markets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Any other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Farmer's Markets in Boyle Heights moves forward. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number twenty. A substitute motion has been circulated, and I believe there are cards for this matter as well.
All right, item twenty, Zuma Dog? All right, no worries. Thanks, man. Mr. Dog passes. That will close the public comments. We have a substitute motion moving forward with the Silver Lake Reservoir improvements. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number twenty-one, called special for cards. Mr. Zuma Dog?
Just like old times, track maps. Wop, wop, bop, wop. Oh, let's go for little Zuma Dog Greatest Hits. Excuse me, don't approve these track maps. You don't have enough infrastructure, old outdated pipes and electricity. What did we see happen? Pipes bursting, they can't handle the pressure of the added density. Hey, don't approve these density track maps. You're not going to be able to afford to operate your own city. What happened? You're not able to afford to operate your own city. What did I say about the effects of density with traffic, law enforcement, everything? Now, as you created and built all the density through these track maps, you now have a city you can't operate. You've laid off, furloughed and fired everybody early retirements, and now you can't, the city attorney can't operate, the accounting department can't account. Nothing's happening, and it's going to get worse next year. So let me just say, no track maps, because you don't have the money to afford to operate. You don't have the infrastructure, and you're going bankrupt. And so the thing is, I'd like to say here, the final, the report...
Mr. Dog, if I can just stop you for a sec. We can hear you better, and we can actually turn your voice up louder if you're a little further from the microphone. Don't worry.
Thank you. It does come across much more prestigious and statesmanly like when I stand like this. So I'd just like to say that the engineer report says that there are bonds and agreements and contracts related to these projects. And due to recent allegations of conflict of interest within these housing departments, I say that the Quimby fee of $35,000 should be immediately refunded, because the city has shown, I have heard that in a certain unnamed council member's district, once the money goes into rent escrow, it's like Hotel California, baby. It can check out any time it likes, but it can never leave. Once the city says you get your reap money back, well, you go try to get it back. It ain't happening.
That closes our public comment for this item and for today. Let's take a vote on this item. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Mr. LeBonge?
Can I just introduce some great students from Southwest College, right here, a graduate of Fairfax High School. Tell the council your name.
Ty Ritchie.
Ty Ritchie? Nice to meet you. Give her a big hand, they're down here as a study class. And also from Pally High School.
Palisades.
Ms. Hampton, Sophia Hampton from Palisades. Great Southwest students. Thank your teacher for coming down and spending the day.
Thank you guys also.
Okay, say it right there loud.
Thank you guys, this is...
Thank you. Great to have you here.
Thank you for having us. Sorry, I wasn't prepared.
He does that to us too, don't worry. With that, if we can go to the next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral?
Those are posted and referred. Next order of business?
The desk is clear.
All right, colleagues, any announcements? This weekend, I know, is full of all sorts of big events. We're doing a community cleanup at Belmont High School that starts at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow at 1575 West Second Street. So come on by, folks are free, and help us do that. We also want to, again, congratulate, I know Mr. Weston brought them in, the 50th anniversary of the New Democratic Club, which will have their gala this weekend. And are there any other? And then, of course, on Sunday, want to let us know, I'm sure Mr. Weezer will add some notes, it is Ciclavia, the first Ciclavia for the city of Los Angeles, starting in East Hollywood, ending in Boyle Heights, but it's not a route. It's wherever you want to go, go out, walk, skate, dance, bike, celebrate, bring some food, there'll be some food trucks, some music, a lot of spontaneous celebrations, but showing what happens when we close down a whole bunch of different streets. We'll have traffic points to let cars through so that they can continue to get to where they need to go, but claim some of our streets back for another mode of transportation and celebration. So thank you, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Rosendahl, and everybody's been a big part of making that happen. Mr. LeBonge on Fourth Street, I know it's going through your district too, and that's 101010, so all day on Sunday. And there's going to be a rally here at City Hall as part of it, because the route goes right by here as well. Mr. Weezer?
President, and it starts for you in Hollywood, it starts for me in Boyle Heights, but anybody could join anywhere along the route. And anybody who needs information on what street closures there will be, you can call 311 to get information. The organizers of this event have made everything, have really went out of their way to help people who live along the route and have businesses on the route to have access during this day. But please come out, enjoy the open streets, go however you can, bicycle, skates, walking. I'm looking into whether I could take a horse, Mr. Garcetti, so let's see if that's possible. Would you go with me, Mr. Zion, if I take a horse?
There's a charro outfit waiting for you. Don't worry. Other announcements? Mr. Zion?
Mr. President, tonight is Dancing with the Stars, Valley Cultural Center, their annual event. We wish the folks good luck on winning that Dancing with the Stars at the Marriott this evening. Also, we have a community cleanup tomorrow, American Legion Hall in Reseda. That will take place tomorrow in Reseda, another wonderful cleanup program. And St. Bernadine's Festival, St. Bernadine's Church on Valley Circle, they're having a festival this weekend. Everyone's invited to participate. And I have one more item, Mr. President, on Sunday, the Walk of Hearts, Joe Andrews and the Walk of Hearts, where we select teachers and honor them, and we put monuments on the sidewalk. That'll take place on Sunday on Sherman Way in the beautiful all-American city of Canoga Park. Many activities taking place this weekend, enjoy. And Monday is Columbus Day, city holiday, so we wish everyone a happy Columbus Day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, announcements?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have a couple of events in the Eighth District we'd invite the public to. One, we're in concert with our local sheriff that's just to our boundary to the west. They're going to be putting on a community shredding day where they're bringing out high-powered equipment to allow people to shred their personal documents, to reduce the impact on identity theft. And they'll be at the Ladera Center on Centinela on Saturday, October the ninth, nine to three. Also, our Consolidated Realty Board will be having a home fair that's free to the public discussing issues of foreclosure, loan modifications, and that's Saturday, the ninth, nine to three, at their 3725 Don Felipe address. And then we have two major events at the California African-American Museum, where Saturday at six o'clock. The Friends Foundation for the African-American Museum will be having their annual fundraiser. And then on Sunday, one of our local sororities, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, will be having their fundraiser on October the 10th, Sunday at 6:00 p.m. at the California African-American Museum.
Other announcements? Mr. Tom LeBonge?
Be the 70th anniversary of the birth of John Lennon, and to those who love his work, we remember mine that day and hopefully apply some of his work to our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions today. And, sorry, do we have any adjourning motions? Thought we did. If we don't have any adjourning motions, thank you, everybody, for rising. My apologies. Thankfully, we don't today. This was a, this is just an exercise. Should there be real adjourning motions, we would ask you to continue.